This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. We are called to order. I'll say it every time we do this. One of the best ways to start a meeting is with our Brighton Believer Awards, and I'm hearing from Dr. McGowan and the nominators and nominatees on how they're contributing to life in Brighton. Dr. McGowan?
Thank you. So as I've mentioned each time too, the Brighton Believes Council continues to recognize people in our community for demonstrating the Brighton Believes' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. The award winners are student teachers, staff members, community members, coaches, and the nomination form is available at bcst.org. Just a wonderful way, and we thank you again, the board, for taking time in meetings to think about the ways people are contributing to our community. The first recognition tonight, and I'd like to ask Karen and Gerard to come on up, is Primetime 585. If you can give them a round of applause. And Dr. Hall, can you join us? Since there's so many high school students that aren't recognized, and Mrs. Edmonds, middle schoolers, modified athletes, could you come on up also, please? That'd be great. So I've been excited for every one of the awards that we've given, in all sincerity. But this one is particularly special, as is Dave Luce tonight. For a couple of frankly, personal reasons. One, but it impacts all of our kids. I nominated Primetime 585 myself personally, feeling as though they are deserving of an award, a Brighton Believers Award, for all that they have done to support our student athletes, not just in Brighton, but all of Section 5. For many years now, Karen and Gerard Iglesias can be seen on the sidelines of sporting events across the area every day of the week, every season of the year. They post videos with highlights from the game, but also do interviews with the student fan section and student athletes after the games. Our students are thrilled when they see Primetime 585 come to an event. The positive energy that they bring is infectious, both in person and through their videos. Primetime 585 isn't afraid, though, to also stand up for what is right. So there's this great energy that's been created around athletic events, and you know, there's not as much local news coverage, but our kids, and I would say that like the ESPN age, you are our local sports center in ESPN for our kids, and they're with you, by the way. Like, schools are way behind you and our kids who are here doing it. But the really cool thing, too, that I mentioned to you, in addition to this great positive energy, is that they're not afraid to stand up for what is right, and have taken stands in particular situations throughout the community, just to simply say, "This might not be right. People ought to look at us." And that has made a big, big difference. So thanks to Karen and Gerard, positive fan support is highlighted, school spirit is being promoted, all great positive things for kids in our community. And the great action on the court of the field is being highlighted nonstop. In a world that's looking for great news, they are a shining light. In addition to promoting sporting events, they also conduct a Thanksgiving Adopt a Family program, holiday coat, toy drives with local student athletes as well. The Iglesias are a constant source of kindness and respect. They also take their work to another level in demonstrating integrity, respect, and self-control during the most difficult circumstances, as I mentioned, standing up for what is right, promoting positive social change, even when that means putting the treatment of others and children above the way they may be treated or the criticism they may receive, especially in social media space, which is not a pleasant place to be sometimes. But they put what is right above all else and embody the Brighton Believes. We are proud to have them as part of our children's experience in our community and throughout the section. Keep doing what you're doing, and thank you for all that you do. There you go. It's a Primetime. I feel like, I feel like the kids, like I should be jumping up behind you so that it gets out on Twitter. Dan will take our attention. I really appreciate it. Go! Our kids would be upset if you don't. Go, go, go.
Bye.
Don't apologize. Thank you.
Such great people. Well, speaking of great people, we've got another one here today. And since his daughter's here, I wonder if I should read the entire list of how wonderful he is, because he wanted her to hear it, just that way. No, I'm just kidding. Dave Luce. Dave, come on up, please. Danielle, I think you should come up, too. For sure. So I don't even know exactly where to start with Dave Luce. The custodian currently at Brighton High School, nominated by teacher Kevin Pierce. Kevin wrote that Dave has helped make BHS brighter. Any needs we have as faculty and staff, he makes it happen. Dave is like the fairy godfather getting wishes granted. He and his team are responsive to our needs and so efficient. Staffing is hard to come by. However, under Dave, BHS is a well-oiled machine. He goes above and beyond to make teachers feel at ease. In my room, we've had desks that would never stay level for years. It drove students crazy. One mentioned to Dave and they were fixed the next day. He is so present within the building, too. I often cross his path and am greeted with a nice hello. I and many others are so grateful to have him at BHS. I will tell you, Dave Luce is a shining star in the Buildings and Grounds Department. Dave makes sure that everything is done, but is done perfectly. Dave treats every building he has ever worked in, the middle school, the high school, as if it is his own, takes personal ownership over every aspect of the building, and making sure things are done the right way, at the right time, quickly and efficiently. I know that Dave takes personal pride in, well, actually practically really, timing himself to see if things are done as quickly as they should be responding to everyone's needs. So there's the Building and Grounds capacity of it, right? Like, getting the job done, getting it done well. But there's the connection to young people and connection to the people that he works with. And we know that children benefit from having a connection to trusted adults, whatever role they might be in. Dave is an example to them of hard work, of perseverance, of getting the job done, of honesty, integrity, kindness, everything that we want kids to be seeing. He is demonstrating that in everything that he does. He does that also with the people that work with him as a team. And I'll just share a very personal story, because my son Peter had the opportunity to work with Dave as a seasonal helper, and Dave is the person who texts with him from back here, who continues to keep in touch with him, and serves as a mentor and a person that he looks up to as somebody that he would like to be like in the workplace. So for him, for all of the children, for the kids in our community and for our staff who gets all of their needs met, we congratulate Dave on his Brighton Believers Award.
Thank you very much. Thank you. As is the case with every public meeting, we have the opportunity for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come to the podium to speak? Seeing none, I will move on to the agenda. Next up is the approval of tonight's agenda. You all have received that. Any questions or edits?
It's the amended agenda, just so you know.
Oh, I haven't got that up yet. Thank you very much for saying that. Appreciate that. So I want to go for approval of the amended agenda. Thank you, Kim. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from April 11th, our last business meeting. You all had the chance to review that. If there are no edits or changes or corrections, motion to approve those minutes. Moved by Julie?
Second?
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor? We've are approved. Next, we're going to get a great report on innovative learning.
So I'm Dr. Fuzzy Glazer, Director of VPA and Instructional Technology, and alongside of me are two of our amazing tech leaders. We have Katie Thalen, who's our Tech Leader K through 5 at Council Rock and French Road, and we have Stacy Kuvo, who is our Instructional Technology Leader from 6th grade to 12th grade, and they definitely cross over and help each other K through 12. And we're going to share a little bit tonight. Katie's going to kick us off around things that are going on in the district.
Wonderful. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to focus my part of the presentation on the innovative learning that we've been doing in the Makerspaces, both at Council Rock and at French Road. The first thing we need to understand is what the purpose of our Makerspaces is. And we are really focusing essentially on the social-emotional learning skills and blending our habits of mind, along with some key components of technology, engineering, science, and math. You can see that one section is engineering and design. We have computational thinking and digital literacy. And all of these different components fit into the brand-new New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, and they're also connected with the curriculum that every grade level is already doing. We have a vision in Brighton for our Makerspaces. This started last summer when we had a K-12 kickoff of our Brighton Makerspace vision. And over the year, we have worked with more research. We've refined these different goals with our committees, and this is what we have so far. Essentially, we want to spark curiosity and engage our learners. The ultimate goal is that students transfer these skills to become competent innovators, leaders, critical thinkers, and engaged citizens. And again, these skills that they're taking away from the Makerspace transfer to all aspects of their life and all subject areas they're learning. Over at Council Rock, we call the Makerspace the Have Lab. We're taking the habits of mind and the Makerspace, and we're putting them together, and we came up with the Have Lab. In the Council Rock Have Lab, classes in K-2 have so much fun making different projects, working in robotics, and I'll show you lots more examples as we go through. Over at French Road, we're still calling it the Makerspace. You can see here, there are some examples of what the space looks like and what the kids are doing. Again, a variety of different things. In both of the labs, we are focusing on the habits of mind and a maker mindset. You can see that there are lots of different components to being a maker. It involves being inventive and creative, facing challenges that are really part of the real world, and learning how to solve them and work together as a team. So here are some examples of students engaged in teamwork and sharing. The habit of mind they're focusing on here is thinking interdependently. We have some B-Box, we have kebab planks, and some building materials. We explore new ways to do things. So we might look at leaves and think about how we could turn leaves into different creative animals. We might do something with snap circuits or coding with robots. And all of these are different ways to think flexibly, which is the habit of mind. In the engineering and design component, we focus on the design thinking process. Students go through a series of steps where they begin with a wonder. They move on to creating something. They have to persevere through that creation, reflect on it, and then make an authentic connection. Here are some examples of each. We begin with our wonder by asking questions. So we take real-world problems like, "How can we protect the oceans?" This is an example of pictures from a 3rd grade answering that question. And the essential question of how they protect the oceans came from the end of their ELA curriculum that they were focusing on, learning about oceans. When we present an essential question or begin wondering, we often provide criteria and constraints. So what needs to happen, and then what are your limitations within reason? So it could be time limits, it could be materials, or something like that. The next step is creation. Here's another example. This one's from Council Rock. We've had a lot of fun this year building our faces, and this is part of the process of creating, where we're using the habit of mind of creating, imagining, and innovating, and they're looking at themselves closely in the mirror and really looking at all the different parts of their face and building themselves. Teachers have done a really nice job of taking their projects and thinking of creative ways to share these with an authentic audience as well. The next step in the process is persevering. So sometimes during this process, things get challenging. Here's an example of a series of photos from Council Rock where students had eight minutes to build the tallest tower they can with kebab planks. And you can see in the first picture on the left there, the group said, "We're done," but they had five minutes. And we had a nice conversation about how they could try making it even taller with the extra time. Well, they took a risk. They tried it a new way. You can see on the bottom picture, it fell. And this was an amazing opportunity to really talk about how we persist. You can see on the timer there, they still had two minutes left. They built it again. And you can see the last picture, they ended up being super excited. So it's a great opportunity for students to naturally work through feelings and experiences where they were challenged and they succeeded. You can see in the picture of the boy on the blue paper, he's coding a robot to travel along a timeline. And he did a nice job of using a protractor and a ruler to measure the angles, because he was struggling to get the robot to turn the right amount. And he asked for a protractor, so I thought that was really cool. Reflecting is a super important part of the process. It's where students think about what they learned, and they grow, and they hear from each other, and it's just a super meaningful time for them to think about how the habits of mind were applied and what they learned. Within the next major component is digital literacy. You can see some examples of the different types of technology that we have in the Makerspaces that students have become very good at using. They love the green screen videos. They're super creative. And Book Creator has been amazing, too. We've explored a lot with Canva. They make presentations with PowerPoint and Seesaw, but it's fun to see how they've been embedding and using these things together. And that's part of connecting. Finally, computational thinking. Take a look at all of these amazing pieces of technology we have. Kids are super engaged. They're having so much fun learning new things in the Makerspace. Here are some more photos of coding with B-Box. Couldn't leave them out. But these are examples of finding humor and responding with wonderment and awe. Finally, I'd like to say a big thank you. The Brighton Education Fund and the Nancy Bach Fund helped us fund some of the materials in our space. I included some pictures around the outside of the amazing things that were delivered that we are having so much fun with. And thank you to the Board of Education for supporting our endeavors with the Makerspaces.
Thank you for having me. I'm Stacy Kuvo, I'm the 6th-12 Instructional Technology Leader. And my role looks a little different from Katie's in that we don't have a Makerspace in the middle school as of yet, and we do have a space in the high school, but it's a space in the making. So Dr. Glazer will talk a little bit more about that later. So I'm going to share with you a little bit about what we're doing at the middle school and the high school with using instructional technology to enhance instruction with our existing tech tools. We have gone on virtual field trips. We use NearPod, we've used Canva, Book Creator that Katie mentioned. I'll show you some examples in a minute. We're working in conjunction with Mona and the American Sign Language teachers and interpreter at our school to look for getting some resources and some funding for a summer course to have students connect with a student that we have that's new to our district, who is completely deaf and is looking for opportunities to be able to share and grow with her, our student body. This slide is showing you our virtual field trip to Egypt using iPads that we borrowed from Bosse's. We used a program called NearPod, and we explored tombs and pyramids. And when we got to the pyramids, they were all about counting how many camels they could find on the exterior, and then they noticed there was a parking lot. And then it sort of ruined the experience a little bit for them there, and I'm like, "Stay away from the parking lot. Let's go back and look how many camels we can find." So that was a lot of fun, and we went into the tomb, and we looked at the gilded ceiling, and it was great. And then they noticed, you know, lights. You know, "Why are there lights?" "There was electricity in the tomb?" I'm like, "Well..." So, you know, there's a lot of questioning, but a lot of great exploration as well. I am also teaching digital citizenship education lessons to the 6th grade academy. So there's a series of four, finishing up with the last group of academy students in the next couple of months, and those are the topics of our discussion. And today, we did "Don't Feed the Fish" with a group of kids, and I said, "The only fish you want to engage in are the Swedish fish that I'm going to give you right now before I leave." I think that was the highlight of the presentation, to be honest. But the conversation is always extremely engaging and may bring so many stories that enlighten me and teach me about things that I don't know. We constantly refer back to this digital interactions, you know, how we want to present ourselves and looking at the Brighton Believes qualities as well. In 7th grade, in ELA classes, we did a similar type of lesson, but we modified it obviously for the grade level. And, you know, the students use the Brighton Believes qualities, and they created some infographics using Canva. And then I made some appearances in 7th grade science class to talk about acceptable use, because the teacher was having some struggles with that, so we revisited that idea. In Mrs. Padilla's science class, they used Canva to create a water project, and then they shared them in a digital gallery walk using a Schoology Media album, which was really cool, because all the kids got to see everybody else's project. We didn't have to print anything. We didn't have to waste paper. We didn't have to waste ink. It was a beautiful thing. Mrs. Falter's class did a very similar project using human rights. These are her models that she came up with to share with her students that we sort of worked through together to figure out, you know, how to use Canva and how to change colors and things like that. We use Book Creator at the 6th and 7th grade level in two different capacities. The 6th graders use it with Mrs. Falter. The 7th graders use it in English class, and I'm going to show you some examples in a second. And we also have our newspaper that was created with Book Creator. So this is an example of the 7th grade class. There are four different student examples here where they made their own graphic novel representation of a single story. They had to come up with a single story. A single story would be a misrepresentation of somebody not understanding, you know, what's going on behind the scenes kind of thing. And they used, you know, word bubbles, and they pulled in graphics, and some of them that are not on here actually had some video and sound, which was really cool. Our TCMS Times, these are some snapshots of the pages here, but this is the first page of TCMS Times. They use the Book Creator software as well. Within that software, they could embed links to videos, which was really innovative. And then they had all these little links to surveys that the kids could do. And of course, this was digitally published to their peers. Most recently, in just last week, we had a meeting with Joanne, Dana, and Mona and I to see how we could sort of make this American Sign Language summer course offering through the Brighton Community Education happen this summer, even with a very short timeline. And we're also looking to see if we can get some supplemental subsidized funding through the BEF grant for students to be able to participate in that. At BHS, we have a lot of technology things related to the School Tool, Schoology Integration with gradebook that happened primarily. That was the bulk of the work there. But we have been able to participate in webinars with a woman from the Southern Illinois University, and it was our school. There was another school there, but it was very engaging in that we had back-and-forth correspondence and communication with different questions about how or what we should be knowing about how we use technology in our world effectively and what we should know about what we're agreeing to when we go, you know, to Instagram and click "Agree" on those, you know, privacy policies. I worked with a couple students. I am working with a couple students. Ben, I worked with during Black History Month. He wanted to do a trivia contest. We met. He came up with all this, you know, this trivia, and so he'd never used a Microsoft Form before, so we showed him how to use Microsoft Form. He created QR codes. We created a poster. We put it all over the building. Some kids participated in that, and hopefully next year, it'll grow even more. Sydney Wolf is working on her own website for research that she wants to publish. And in the Makerspace, we now have some residents, I should say, that are using that space, and it's the Fashion Club there, and they have neatly organized all of the donations that we've collected. They don't have any sewing machines. Yeah, they have tons of fabric, so maybe they're going to glue them together, but we're going to get there. And then we have a student-designed mural that's going to go in the Makerspace starting in midday, and I'm very excited about that design that Willa has created. And the webinar, these are the 28 things you should be doing online that Howard and Barry and I organized for the students. This is the poster that Ben and I created. They lived with QR codes, and it's very tiny to see, but every week, there were a bunch of people that were highlighted that were in that trivia contest that the kids participated in. So Ruby Brotherton and Carrie Crowley are the two fashionistas that are doing the Fashion Club and getting that space to look like a Makerspace of sorts. And Willa has this great creation that she's going to be working on in midday. It's in black and white now, but she's putting it in color for us, so we can sort of see what that's going to look like. But she's got a lot of great ideas there that talk about innovation and creativity. And so overall, 6-12, everything that's been happening for both grade level bands, the School Tool, Schoology Gradebook integration has been pretty successful with a few glitches here or there. We've been supporting the new teacher Phase 1 and 2 with technology and touching base with those new teachers to see how we can support their growth in that area. There is a Bruin Parent Tech Bytes Schoology Group page that is slowly being built to help support the needs of parents that have questions about, "How do I get into my Schoology account? And what is this thing called School Tool?" And then weekly emails and tech bytes that are sent out to share, you know, little tidbits about how you could use this, or did you know that with the staff. And of course, Katie and I and Dr. Glazer are all preparing for Teach Tech Fest on June 29th. Thank you.
I promise that mine will be brief, but I just thought I would share some of our upcoming goals for next year. Again, I'm so blessed to have Katie and to have Stacy alongside of me. We also have tech mentors in every building, and we're really lucky to have Dr. Rio also helping us along our way and giving us some guidance and some support when we do the Makerspaces. So at our high school, there is a donor that graduated from Brighton in the '40s, and his family, again, is making a pledge to help us create the Gerald B. Kramer Innovation Center. And so I've been working with the donor family and the foundation to try to get in a proposal and to look at our space and say, "How can we really promote innovation entrepreneurship that has a lot of Rochester ties?" So again, the Fashion Club, we're looking at textiles. We're looking at an app development station. We're looking at a broadcast media thing, because content creation is key as we move into our future spaces. So again, keep your eyes open, and again, we are looking for some sewing machines, so just in case you have any at home. Also, our tech mentor program, we're working, I've been really fortunate to work again with Stacy and Katie, and we're looking at the tech mentor program and how we can actually utilize the resource of time and people and the funding to make sure that we get the most bang for our buck in terms of ensuring that everyone across the district has something. So we're actually getting some Microsoft Streams training through Bosse's and the Smart Start Grant, and we're going to be working with teams, and then next year, again, we're going to be working with the Digital Fluency Standards and making sure, because those are across all content areas, K through 12. So again, we're also working to do a continued alignment and change the ground on the portrait of a graduate. And so we know that these are things that are coming, and so one of our jobs is to be innovative and to really start thinking about what's coming down the pike and how we can start problem-solving and brainstorming now to help make these things a reality. And again, as you saw from Katie and Stacy, the social-emotional learning and the curiosity building and the collaboration and all of the things here are really, this is a space where this shines for all of our students. And then I gave you guys, for the board members, I put out some sample copies. It isn't the full set. I will email them to you, but wanted the same on paper. So I just gave you some little snippet snapshots. The Digital Fluency and Computer Science Standards are rolling out now. To be honest, our district is just a little bit behind, but most districts in New York State are, because these were coming out right when COVID was coming, and it was a little bit unexpected. But we have a great plan, and we're putting together a plan with our tech mentors to ensure that we offer training across next year and that we can start working in the next three years to really have a wonderful plan so that we can make sure that each grade level gets the support they need to integrate these things. Because again, this is the future of where we're heading. And again, so looking at our goals, you know, we're looking to build awareness. We've been doing that for the last year. Now it's about building capacity. And again, Stacy and Katie and the tech mentors have been great resources in the schools this year. And so again, I want to thank the board for creating that space and creating those positions, because it's allowing us to change the narrative so that technology isn't something that happens outside of the classroom in a special class or what happens with the kids when they get home and they're on gaming system, but it's actually a way for learning and problem-solving and engaging themselves. So I want to thank you guys so much, and we're always around if you guys have any questions. And again, we're incredibly grateful for your time tonight. So thank you.
Just, I'll say a couple of things. First, great job. Yes. I'll be honest, as I was going through the agenda, and I saw 43 slides... I'll be honest, as I was going through the agenda and I saw a 43-slide presentation, I hesitated for a minute and was almost going to say something to Dr. McGowan. But I really appreciate the enthusiasm and the excitement and the passion you all have in your voices for bringing this to the kids. And you can't fake that. So thank you very much. This was just fantastic, the work that's being done across all four schools. And you guys are doing a great job of adapting when maybe there's not a perfect Makerspace in the middle school or quite the high school yet and still getting a ton of things done. So also want to say thank you for that, but this is just fantastic. So congrats. I don't know if anybody else on the board wants to offer a comment or question?
I'd like to go to Council Rock here.
Yes. I want to go.
We have a board meeting there with all the residents.
Can we just play? Yeah.
We can see us all on the floor drawing and trying to figure out how a protractor works.
Yeah, how to get up off the floor.
Exactly. Get up off the floor. Oh, great job. Thank you very much. All right. Principal reports. Principal Tappan, we would love to hear from you first.
Good evening, everyone. So it feels like a long time since we've presented, but a lot has happened. So the big event of last week was our ice cream social. So Ice Cream Social, Open House Dancing, Book Fair. Oh my, a lot was happening. Many thanks to many of the board members who were there volunteering. We had Dr. Sprinkles. We had some new term for Dr. Jeffrey.
They called me.
Yes, they did. But Nine Cone Cone was the amazing provider of the ice cream. It's just such a feel-good event. People, the kids come in so excited about showing off their school, sharing it with their family members, whoever's able to come. We structured it a little bit differently to try to have, make sure kids got to where they needed to go. And I think it worked really well. We'll debrief with the PTSA about that. But they had time in their classroom and then they were really tasked with exploring the entire building, getting to all places, dancing. So the book fair was set up in the library at Del Motkovich's and the chair people did a great job. We went back to Scholastic last year. We went with a local vendor that we really liked. They just weren't able to provide us, which is a great thing, the volumes of books that people were wanting to buy. So Scholastic was able to do that. It also was super simple and fold-up-able so that we could do it between our nights. Classrooms were visited and thoughtfully explored by the kids with, with teachers kind of carving out what that looked like. And then the dancing. Dancing was a highlight. The kids were all excited to show what they've been learning in both music and PE class, a combination of learning that's happened over the last several weeks and then culminating in showing. So it really is just a special time. And people are always, we do it usually three nights in a row and people look at me and say, oh, you and Mrs. Jeffries must be so tired. It really is energizing and invigorating and people are just so happy to be there. So it was really exciting. And thanks again for those of you who were able to get there to volunteer. We're also excited to present or to share our Council Rock's first annual night out. So this is a combination of our wellness team plus working with Nate Merritt and his department, along with Dr. Glazer, to really highlight for our families, but also for our staff to get out there and support middle school and high school kids who are in athletics to see our kids. You know, one of the most wonderful things about a K-2 building is that it's small and it, well, it's not small, but it's tight in terms of we get to focus in on what are they at that developmental age. One of the negatives is we don't necessarily get to see the outcomes of them. Some of the hard work that, you know, we do in getting them ready, they don't come to fruition until they maybe get a little bit older. So we've highlighted the art show. We picked a day. Of course, you can go any other day, but this is one where our staff is going to be out, we're hoping, and families from Council Rock come out. So the kids also get to see, what does this look like as I get older? A lot of them are participating in the youth sports. But this is just a night where a lot was happening in our own campus where we can go out and support. So the art show is happening in the Brighton High School foyer, JV baseball, JV softball, varsity softball. It's just going to be an exciting night. So that's May 10th and it kind of rolls throughout the afternoon and evening. We're excited to see what that brings about to connect our community with the larger community up at the high school and middle school. So this is Mrs. Hodgson's students who are an incredibly wonderful special group of kids. They have done a whole lot of research on farms. And you can see they've done all about learning about all the different animals that might be on a farm. They've created this incredible hen's nest that has real rolling eggs. And it's quite interactive and quite fun. If you ever need just like a little stress relief, you can go and roll the eggs. Catch me there often through the middle of the day. But just something that I thought highlighted their incredible learning. And then this is, you've heard about this before, but Andrea Yaman has kind of taken it to the next level. This is our second graders participating in the online biography. So first of all, we had over 50 second graders voluntarily participate. So this is all voluntary and all done online where they learn about different historical figures, write about them, connect them, as I'm sure you can guess, to the habits of mind. So Andrea displayed these outside and I could spend hours. So these are, they had to pick dinner guests that they would like to, after learning about them, who would they invite to their dinner table and why? So Walt Disney, Jane Goodall, and Dave Pilkey. Like, how? How? But they bring it. They are all inspired by animals. And they think these three guests would talk about how animals unite people. So this is all student-driven. So the dinner party taking a peek. They also researched their own person. They start with a model of Harriet Tubman that Andrea walks them through and they read all together. And then they choose a person that they're interested in and connect it to which habit of mind they think that they use most often. And then, so we've got Oprah. We've got May Jemison. Just incredible choices for second graders and really, really great. And then this was my favorite addition to it. It's taking a little bit of what French Road has done about changemakers and really applying it down here to the biographies. How can they, how do they see themselves as changemakers? So we've got someone who wants to make music like Lin-Manuel Miranda, I believe. That might be one of our board member's daughters. How someone else is going to make medicine that cures cancer. And someone else is going to be a scientist that will stop COVID forever. And that is truly like the future. That is, and which habits of mind will they need to have to be able to do that? So preparing them for, for that future. It's just amazing and every year it grows and gets better and more thoughtful under the guidance of Mrs. Yaman. So and then I can't get past, you know, walk past a Mo Willems display without taking some pictures. So this is kindergarten author study of Mo Willems studying Piggy and Gerald, but also the pigeon. And it's so good to have kids saying what they don't want the pigeon to be able to do. So, or their paintings of pigeons. So just another great way of engaging kids across the board, across the curriculum in learning about author's style, author's purpose, but also just the joy of reading. And then this was an artist, Alma Thomas, and her art influence. And this is Mrs. Urely's second grade class, really doing a great deal of research. But then again, cross-curricularly connecting to the art and creating some geometric kind of replicas of what she did and really studying her as an artist and a person and as, again, a changemaker. So this month, all of us will be kind of talking about the blueprint and staff support and creating a collaborative culture. And we've done some really exciting things to just try to get people reconnected, I think, after COVID, getting out of their classrooms, coming out, seeing each other, seeing each other socially, not just connected, you know, academically. So we've had Wellness Month and Wellness Wednesdays. We had a cornhole tournament that Mr. Tappan and Mrs. Jeffries lost really badly. And like, we were like, I'll talk. And then we were like, trounce. But so much fun to be laughing with colleagues before and after school. Our wellness team created a staff zen and quiet room to be able to go and do some guided meditation. We've had yoga, community walks and runs just to get people out moving, but also socializing. Friday breakfasts are back, which we're really excited about. And lots of staff gatherings and staff celebrations that, you know, we always did, but trying to reinvigorate them. And really with the focus of making sure people feel like they belong to something as well as making sure it's our whole staff. I know we talk a lot about how we've really focused on all of our students. And now we're really looking at our whole staff. So our custodians, our, our school food service workers, everyone is part of our school community. And how do we get everyone participating? And I think one of the proudest moments for me of that was, you know, I haven't brought it up, but our dodgeball. You look at where Dodgeball was. Yes, I was proud that we, you know, made a stink and got ourselves back in and advocate for ourselves. But more, I was proud of who showed up. Because if you look, it was such a cross-section of our entire. So we had teaching assistants represented, classroom teachers from every grade level, support staff. Our food service was, was there. Our custodians were there. It was like a true representation of who Council Rock was. And I think that was the proudest moment. You know, also, you know. So coming up, we've got no school this Friday. We've got a really great day planned with the help of Dr. Rio and Re-Center at Council Rock for our Superintendent's Conference Day. And then we start some transition activities from Council Rock to French Road. It is time for that. So we've got via Zoom, a transition meeting with Dr. Rio and myself for parents. We've got that Council Rock night out. We've got a volunteer reception where we celebrate the amazing PTSA volunteers and volunteers who come out to support us, the budget and school board vote. Half-day on Friday, the 26th, so we have dismissal at 11:30. And then obviously no school on Monday for Memorial Day. So hardly believe we are talking about May. So questions?
We say it every year. It just comes so quickly. It just, it's like that. No, everything looks great. Really impressed with Andrea Yaman's project. That's just really cool and the progress you noted in regards to how that's evolved. So that's great. Any other comments from?
I'm worried. Which, making a stink, which habit of the mind was that?
We call it persisting.
Danny, I was right next to humility on that. Just checking.
It's great.
I'm happy to have you select the next person.
Dr. Rio, I gotta do it. She's working two jobs. She decides to go next.
Great job, Matt.
Hi. French Road's updates. Happy to present them today. And also, didn't really think about how Katie was presenting on the Makerspace and has really outdone the slides I have on the Makerspace. So we'll talk about them and thank Katie for all of her awesome work when we get to there too. But we are kicking it off because a lot of fourth grade teachers were very excited to share the work that's been happening in the Makerspace. And I will say that on the regular, when you walk by there, there are children in there, teachers in there, Katie in there, lots of people working. And fourth graders were working with snap circuits in the Makerspace, looking at circuitry and engineering. And here are just some pictures from Ms. Kazoff, Mrs. Higgins, Mrs. Willis's classes. You can see the space is being well utilized. You saw a lot of the equipment that was in there. This year that was purchased through some grants and through our title funds. And we are really excited to see the kids really utilizing the space and connecting it to curriculum too. At the last update, I shared some curriculum that was going on in third and fourth grade. So this time I focused on fifth grade. And this is a unit that I'll kind of go through, which I really liked this piece. I have a few different classrooms highlighted in fifth grade. And what I love is that they are all working on the same unit and they're just a little bit off. So through this time, you'll get to kind of see the whole unit in action. But it's our human rights unit at fifth grade. And it starts off with the fifth grade students looking at pictures, picture books of human rights. And one of the activities that they start with is really engaging in reading the Book of Partners and thinking about some of the human rights that they see in the book, asking questions, what they're wondering about. Start to just kind of activate that prior knowledge about what they know about human rights and kind of get them ready for what they're about to dive into. So these are some students at that point in the unit from Mr. Iredano's fifth grade class. As they move forward, we have kids from Ms. Scottfried's class here who are also engaged in the picture books. But at this point, they look at the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and they start to think about which human rights were upheld and which human rights were violated. So they start to, through the use of picture books, which I love that we have this in this unit and is a really great tool to help them understand human rights through, you know, a picture book lens with the pictures and the text that's a little bit easier to read at most times. So these students are engaging in that part. Through this unit, they also read the book Esperanz Arising. And they look at human rights through that text with their class as well. And then I have fifth grade students from Ms. Webster's class here who have kind of come to the end of the unit. So they're a little bit ahead and they are celebrating in a culminating activity where they, part of the book is, speaks about all different Hispanic foods throughout, that's a theme throughout each chapter of the book. So some of our teachers have created a special activity where students can then taste some of the foods that they read about in the book, create yarn dolls, which was a piece of it, and just celebrate, you know, some of the things they've learned about, which is awesome. And you have a little picture of your dog there too. We have, fourth grade students were just fantastic. I had to highlight them. I forgot to highlight them last month in Ms. Kazoff's class, who helped us with the help of Eric Gruner to create a very funny hallway safety video, just kind of bringing back, it's springtime for elementary school and sometimes we forget our stuff qualities in the hallway. But our teachers played a big part in this. I don't have them in this particular picture in demonstrating what not to do in the hallway. So very entertaining for these students to show the school what we should be doing in the hallway while the teachers kind of were the silly ones doing all the inappropriate things. Did help us kind of realign our stuff qualities for the spring though. Moving to the special areas, I mean, like you can't, hot cross buns is what you hear in the instrument. But Mr. Dozer stepped it up and brought in some hot cross buns. So this is a picture of some of his students who were waiting to finally eat their hot cross buns once they've learned how to play the song. So just so cute, but you know, I'm sure that at this point, our IAM teachers are sleeping and dreaming about hot cross buns. Also, we have Mrs. Ischam started a composer's club. These students wanted to start the club. There are three students who asked to do this. Mrs. Ischam said absolutely. And they have been writing some really complicated music together by choice. And she's fully supportive of them and encouraging them, which is awesome. So these are three of our fifth grade students who are in their own composer's club, but have been having an awesome time designing some music together. We have musicians in Mrs. Cole's class who are learning lots of different instruments. And you can check out some of them here. Our students are just kind of engaging in like, how do you play some different music with some of these different instruments? Maybe beyond hot cross buns, but probably not. In our special areas also, we have some fourth graders here from Ms. Mix's health class. And as you probably know, Ms. Mix has a big focus, I've talked about it before, on mindfulness in health class. And some of the habits she was focusing on through this health unit are mental health, fitness, nutrition, sleep, hygiene, and safety. And the students had an opportunity to create some either drawings or, or just show some examples of how they would use all of these different habits throughout their day. So which is one that you might use? What might that look like? And teaching the kids how to reinforce with the kids, rather, how to use those habits to stay healthy. And here is Mrs. Fallon in the Makerspace. Dr. McGowan and I happened to be walking around and got to see her engaging with Mrs. Close's fifth grade class with the Dash robot. And what she was teaching the students for this lesson was how to, she had created a timeline for the students and the robot stopped at each point in the timeline and would tell part of the story in the timeline. So using the robot to program to tell a story, but also to stop along the way at the different points. And that was pretty awesome. So there she is in action. And for our updates around supporting a staff, collaborative culture with our staff and school community, just really thinking about ways to get people engaged. As we get to the end of the year, it becomes a time, as we know, where people get very busy. Lots of things are going on, but staying together and connected is really important. So Shirley Flores and I have put together some activities, a mix and mingle at faculty meetings. We brought back the Woo Woo Wagon, the High Five Fridays at Fraz. We are doing a scavenger hunt on Friday at Superintendent's Conference Day to get to know staff better. So we are just trying to bring it up for the end of the school year because everybody needs it. And it's good to laugh. Again, just what Matt said is so true. Just laugh together, have fun together and remember that we have hard jobs to do, but we're all in it together. Lots of events coming up at French Road in May. May is a really busy time. But tomorrow we'll be at Frontier Field, as long as the weather stays nice for our Council Rock and French Road night at Frontier Field with our musicians performing to kick off the night. And we have all of our ice cream socials coming up at French Road. Lots of concerts coming up as well. And again, to echo what Mr. Tappan says, lots of transition things coming our way as well. Katie?
Starting with your school, a whole lot of music events happen there and.
This is the time of the music.
Yes, yes. That's great. Love the idea of a Woo Woo. Love the idea of a woo-hoo wagon. I'm not even sure what it is, but I just like the name.
Yeah, I'm not gonna tell you this time. I'm gonna save that for another time.
Can you bring the woo-hoo wagon with you?
Thank you very much, Dr. Rio. Um, who would you like to go next?
We're just gonna go over.
All right.
Dr. Gasparino, you and I, after this meeting, we have some talking to do about, about, uh, dodgeball next year.
Dodgeball?
I think we can team up.
Collaboration?
Our competitiveness would be good compliments to each other to overtake.
I'm hundred percent in. Doctor Sprinkles.
Doctor Sprinkles. Back up, you have a team.
Right.
You have a team.
Oh, I'm torn now.
No, no, no. You have a team.
This is your, this is your team.
This is your team.
Okay.
Sorry. So about T C M S.
Easily distracted. Danielle, let's keep us moving.
The last time I was here to present, our seventh graders were actually in DC. Um, so here are, uh, a couple of slides that show some pictures of the students in action. They had lovely weather. I think they had said that the cherry blossoms were in bloom. So it's a perfect time of year. Um, just, you know, it, I, I think I said at the last meeting, I wish we could do these trips earlier in the year because the bonding that happens between the students on them is amazing just to see the differences in relationships when they come back. You see it in the cafeteria, you see it in the halls. Um, it's about so much more than just the trip to DC. So, uh, we've got a lot of bucket hats being worn, um, always, always a thing that comes back from DC, but lots of smiles, lots of fun together. Um, and I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, take a minute to recognize all the work that the seventh grade teachers who stayed behind, uh, did to take care of our students who, um, didn't go on the trip and make sure that they had a great time. They spent a day at the Rochester Museum and Science Center. They spent a day bowling. They went out to Mendon Ponds Park. They did a ton of team building activities in school. Um, the teachers who stayed behind said, I had the greatest time with kids, just being with kids, having fun, enjoying themselves. Um, and the kids were so appreciative. I heard them numerous times, thank you for doing this for us, thank you for doing this for us, thank you. So, um, it was really great. Both ends of, of the trip were fantastic. Um, we've got our service club that continues to do amazing things each week. Today they were over at, um, Paper and Pencil or Pencils and Paper doing some work. Um, and this activity, which I think was last week or the week before that, they made little care packages for the Ronald McDonald House. Um, super personal to me as my friend is there with her son who's getting some significant care. So it was really great. They went out of their way to make a personalized bag, um, for my friend and her family. But just, just amazing work that they continue to do. Katie Falter and Katie Cantz. And it's mostly sixth graders, but, uh, just a wonderful group of kids. They probably have upwards of thirty kids that come every single week and do work. Uh, Dr. Gasparino, I think your daughter was over at.
She is.
Pencils and Paper today. So great group. Social Studies, Chris Montulli is, um, touching on World War Two in his eighth grade social studies curriculum. And last week he took advantage of the fact that we had state testing. And, um, on one day he had the Shinshanim students come in and they talked about Holocaust Awareness Day in Israel. So what it looks like in Israel as opposed to kind of the way that we study it and observe it here. Uh, so wonderful learning opportunity for all of the students. And then the next day, he had a presenter come in whose parents, um, were actually in a Japanese internment camp during World War Two. So she brought some artifacts for them, um, but the students were so engaged. It was such an impactful two days. Kudos to him for kind of leveraging the, the upsetness of the schedule to bring something really meaningful to his eighth grade students. Um, I've talked a lot with you this year about different teachers who are engaging and work around, um, making thinking visible and cultures of thinking in their classrooms. And these are some eighth grade classrooms, Joanna Swan's eighth grade classroom and, um, and the, uh, sorry, the AIS math labs as well, really leveraging, uh, white space in whatever capacity they can find it to have students not only just make their thinking literally visible, but allowing them to have conversations with each other as they think through and make sense of the concepts. And, um, it's, it's truly amazing, the confidence that the students gain and how, how much more comfortable they get with the process as the year goes on. Seventh grade, uh, science, Jess Padilla is doing her amazing work with static electricity. Um, the kids always have a great day, uh, when they get to have their hair stand on end. And, um, we always get a lot of laughs out of it as well. But, uh, they're doing their, their atoms projects and finding different ways to present their understanding and mastery of learning. And, you know, some did it just kind of with paper and pencil and some went the three D model. We've got some Legos in there. Uh, it's, it's amazing what kind of resources people find in order to, to demonstrate their learning. And this year was the first time in a really, really long time that we had an eighth grade spring dance semi-formal. And, uh, the students had an awesome time, but I, I have said it at every single meeting, our PTSA is amazing. And what they did in terms of decorating the building, you wouldn't have really recognized that it was T C M S. And it was really important to the parents to make sure that the students felt like they were somewhere else. And they had a fantastic time. They dressed up. Most of the girls had dresses and sneakers, you know, they did a balance of the two. But, uh, they really, really had a great time. And, um, I, I think parents were really appreciative of the opportunity for the students as well. Um, and then it's, it's springtime, so we're starting to see students get outside. We have students, they were outside for lunch today. I don't know why, um, but they wanted to be out there and they, you know, they're taking advantage of our outdoor space. This is Mrs. Hipper's class doing their sidewalk poetry here. Um, we also have Eliza Gasparino picture here as she was honored by the Brighton Memorial Library. She was a contest winner. She wrote a poem, A to Z poem about T C M S that is now going to go into all of our transition publications about how awesome T C M S is. And, um, in the bottom right, we've got a student playing chess. I don't know if you've realized, but like chess.com is probably the number one hit in all of our internet sites in school. It's the new, it's new old craze. Um, but in the bottom right, we've got a student and he's playing with one of our substitute teachers. And this man, we have given the most challenging of assignments, not the boy that he's working with right now, but we have taken every most challenging assignment that we have. Um, and we have given it to Mr. Belkin this year. And he has been phenomenal. He meets kids where they are at. He does whatever is asked of him and takes it to the nth degree. And this is just one of the things that he does, just makes connections with kids and he's just hanging, um, with some R. So, uh, it, it just, it, it's an example of what our staff do every single day. But I really need to make sure that I recognize him because I would have walked out a long time ago. Um, I want, we gave our panorama, uh, survey to students. We administered it to students, um, a few weeks ago. And these are very, very, uh, you know, simplistic data points, obviously as we dig into it and we look at cohort groups, that's going to be where the information is going to be most helpful for us. But, um, I, I did want to just share that when you look at spring twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we are at least moving in the upward trajectory. We still have a lot of work to do. We have, um, folks from Recenter coming in on Friday and they are going to help our staff unpack not only these results, but also, um, the results of an activity that we did in school last week where students answered a lot of questions personally and privately about our school culture. So our whole focus on Friday is going to be around, you know, how do we, how do we recognize our gaps? And then what are we going to do, uh, not only in the spring, but in, in the year ahead to try and, um, show continuous growth in, in a lot of areas that we just need to do better in? And then in terms of staff and collaborative culture, I think, you know, we continue to move and, uh, and come together as much as we possibly can. We're still doing our What's the Bruin Doing? We're, we're, uh, celebrating the work of a staff member every week. We've had food trucks come, um, for lunches at our building. We've had holiday competitions and staff gatherings. But I think one of the coolest things, uh, that we're starting to see as our staff comes together is, uh, was evident yesterday. We had a faculty meeting and at the beginning of every faculty meeting, we do a community building activity, which we did. Everybody brought something that was meaningful to them from their classroom and shared it yesterday. But the second thing that we do is, um, say something good, say something nice, say something positive. And when we first started doing it, it was like one hand would come up and that was it. And yesterday we probably spent fifteen minutes of teachers raising their hands and sharing not only the good that's happening in our classroom with their kids, because that was a huge point of it, but also recognizing each other. Um, there was a lot of, I really appreciate working with so and so because she's doing this. And, you know, and I just stopped at one point and I sent everybody, I said, before I go on, I just want to point this out to you that, you know, when we started this, you all just kind of sat back and nobody wanted to share. And now, now we're feeling good talking about all of the good things that we're doing. So it's the little things like that that I think, um, are making a big difference. Another example is I was joking around with the staff yesterday. I'm not kidding when I say this. When I turned on the radio yesterday morning, that song Snoop John B came on, you know, where it's like, this is the worst trip I've ever been on. Um, so it started with that. And then the next song was Leaving on a Jet Plane. And then the next song was Bad Moon Rising. And then I can't remember what the fourth one was, but I was like, I should turn around now. I should not even go to work. But then somebody raised their hand and said, but was the next song, we're all in this together? And I said, you guys got it. So, um, you know, we're all keeping each other in check, even when it's spring and we're starting to dip, um, we're all finding those positives to pull each other out, doing it with the kids, doing it with each other. Um, so it's, it's, it's really good. Crazy time we've got going on between now and the end of the year. On Thursday, Tom and I are hosting, um, a meeting with the PTSA about, uh, safety, cyber safety and, um, security with, with students. Got our conference day. It's testing season, so next week we have state math testing and then the following week we have map testing. Um, we've got teacher appreciation week, so we're doing some activities that I don't want to share yet to surprise our teachers, um, to show them the love. We've got our art show coming up. Kelly Baptist is an author of a text that our sixth graders read. And she is coming virtually to visit with our students on May seventeenth, which will be super exciting. We've got our world language trips and our talent show. Um, and then May thirty-first kicks us off in terms of our music season. So a ton going on, lots of celebrations, uh, to take place. So we're super excited.
Thank you. And it's great to hear, um, in terms of what you talked about with your staff, that people are picking each other up and having each other's backs when it gets sometimes a little bit difficult in those last couple of months. So it's great to hear.
Principal Edmonds?
All right, I definitely got to get over to Council Rock and roll some eggs. That sounds like a lot of fun. So this presentation is geared, a lot of our clubs and activities at the end of the year. And we have some competitive clubs, um, social clubs, um, uh, cultural clubs that are doing all sorts of wonderful things as we head into the, the end of the year. And one of our newer clubs, programming club, you have to be a student who's either in AP Computer Science or Principles of Computer Science. We had three teams with three students go down to, uh, We Go New York and they competed, um, in this National Code Quest programming contest sponsored by Lockheed Martin. There's a lot of money in this if you get into it in a, in a, a big way. Um, but our kids, uh, competed against schools from all over the country, um, some in person, some virtually. And we had a team of Megan Black, Zach Payne and Anish Kadham, who took the novice division. Um, and actually these students beat several of our, you know, more seasoned, uh, computer programmers at the high school and were very excited to get this wonderful trophy. Um, and Matt Schindler's their advisor. He drove them down on a Saturday, gave up the entire day, had a, had a great time down there and then they came back, uh, that evening. Um, we have the South Asian Student Society. This is the first official celebration of Holi, uh, which is the Festival of Colors. As the students told me, they were, this should have been, you know, probably back in March when it first, uh, as the colors started to show. But, you know, in Rochester, you gotta wait till April anyway. But, uh, and when they first brought this idea to me and I said, you want to throw what? On who, where? And, um, then everything was explained to me because I was not familiar with Holi. And, um, you, uh, you know, it's a, it's a Hindu celebration of color spring, the, the start of spring. And our South Asian Student Society had posters all over the building. They had probably had about sixty students who came out and, um, basically throwing colored, um, uh, dye on each other. And that's just what you do is celebrate it, throw it in the air. Uh, we had to make sure they did not ride the buses home. They didn't go back in the building because it does stain. I think they even put on their work clothes, you don't mind getting ruined. So I said, all right, let's just make sure we stay inside. But they all had a good time. Some really got into it and were colorful Skittles before they left. But, uh, and then they enjoyed some food and, uh, fun with each other. So again, a very nice cultural celebration, but also a lot of, of social stuff going on too. I had the pleasure of accompanying and driving our mock trial students to Jamestown, New York this past weekend. They made it through their, um, local competitions all year, all year long. Uh, mock trials from all over the state get a specific case, um, that they have to make a defense for, and then they're also the plaintiffs. And they don't know exactly what they're going to present each time, so they have to be ready for either side. They have not only the lawyers and the attorneys, they also have to be the, um, witnesses. And all of it is judged by real lawyers and then judges when it gets into the big times. They're having dinner the first night, then they had their morning session, then they broke for lunch, you know, it was a working lunch, as you can see in the right, talking about the case, what they're going to do next. And this is probably the twelfth time they've argued this case, one way or the other. But every time they have new things to say. This was Jamestown City Court, uh, where we at this point were the plaintiffs. And then this is downtown Rochester at the Federal Building in the Federal Court, uh, where they won the, uh, local competition. Heather Bonanon is our advisor and, uh, we have, uh, just a wonderful group of kids and they did, they had a fabulous season. Moving into our climate club, they hosted a summit just this past weekend for Earth Day. And the wonderful thing about this summit is that our two co-presidents, Jayden Vogler and Bridgette Musso, pretty much planned the entire event, got the speakers, uh, people that you might recognize from the community, from local colleges, um, politicians, and came up with the agenda. They presented it, um, at the start, came up with a whole program with a description of each, um, session and students, faculty, community members could attend, um, whatever session they so choose. They had an opening plenary session. There they are, just welcoming everybody, our two student leaders, having, you know, just a, and a great experience to be able to put on such a competition. Um, this session, how can I be active, um, from Sunrise Rochester, a group in Rochester? Think globally, act locally, from Bill Malley, put on another session. Climate justice, uh, from the U of R, put on another session on global warming. And then at the end, they all went outside and were just putting positive climate messages on the sidewalks. Excited about our superintendent's conference day this Friday. Uh, Dr. Glazer, uh, Ms. Kugel, who will be there to do a whole session on artificial intelligence and Chat G P T. Where are we going with it? And what's the overview for the, uh, high school teachers to know about as we are still in this infancy stage, as things seem to change like crazy? We are also spending the afternoon with our departments on our grading conversations. They will continue, excited about that. Similar things that the other buildings have done with their staff throughout the year. One thing that we have done a little differently in faculty meetings, and if you've ever been to a high school faculty meeting, in the old days, even when I was a teacher, you had a seat and that's pretty much where you sat the entire year. You didn't go out of that seat. You would be, you know, moved if you sat in somebody else's seat. Well, this year we have switched it up so they get assigned seats every meeting and they absolutely hate it. But then they like it when they meet all these new people and we do some of these new activities. And anytime anybody speaks, they have to stand up, say their name in the department. Um, I think this was something we all heard. Our staff just didn't know each other after, through COVID. So that's something that's going on and a lot of great activities. And we're doing another one on Friday. Tons of spring events. Um, and I'll be the first to say in all these presentations, May sixteenth, the budget vote, very important night, day, um, vote anytime, day or night that day. Um, budget vote, May sixteenth, seven to nine P M. Um, whoa, was it there? Let's see, there was a couple of highlights. Um, prom. Uh, if you've had kids go through the high school before, prom's usually in April. This is going to be late May where the senior ball used to be, but now senior ball is in June. That was a positive change from COVID, um, and we're sticking with it. So, uh, prom's in May, ball is in June and tons of concerts coming up. Uh, Spring Fest is back better than ever and we're excited.
No, to be fair, I believe Principal Tappin did mention the May sixteenth budget date.
I must have been on my phone. Like you were on your phone playing cards or something.
Maybe you were tweeting at the time, Tom? No, um, uh, another excellent update, hugely packed May. Thank you. May. Thank you very much. A couple of other approvals to go through tonight. First, an approval of the cooperative bid for fine paper. That was a sixty-four page document you all had the chance to review. But that's our bid, of course, for paper. That's a collaborative bid. Any questions on that? Motion to approve that bid?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also up, an approval of the Revised Corrective Action Plan dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. That is correct. Any questions on that? You've had the chance to review it? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Julene?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? Quickly look at the consent agenda. We have the personnel agenda that was on there. Fundraising activities for the Friends of the Arts in Brighton. That's concession sales at the TCMS BHS Fields on June first. And then, actually, the trip that Tom described in great detail, the mock trial team regionals in Jamestown, great success for that team. Congrats to them, Tom. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just like to make a comment about the consent agenda. It includes the approval of the new principal at French Road Elementary School, Callie Coggins, coming to us from Clarence Center Elementary School, who can't wait to meet all of you, and I can't wait for you to meet her. She's been there for eleven years now and is joining our team. We could not be more excited. She'll begin July first. So congratulations, Callie. And to Allison, in a way.
Allison doing a standing ovation.
But for Allison's sake, but also very much for the staff and for students at French Road, parents, family, and all of our colleagues on the team, we're super excited for Callie to join us.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Julene? Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.